Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the May 20, 2019 Meeting of the Shawnee Planning Commission. We'll begin with roll call. Commissioner Montgomery.
Here.
Commissioner Roth. Commissioner Peterson absent is absent. Commissioner Willoughby.
Here.
Commissioner Beanhoff.
There.
Commissioner Busby is here. Commissioner Wise.
Here.
Commissioner Brayley is absent. Commissioner Les Smith.
Hello, here.
Commissioner Muddit is absent. Commissioner John Smith.
Here.
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, unredone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Consent Agenda, Items 1 through 6 are listed under the Consent Items Agenda. Unless there's a request to remove the items from the Consent Agenda, the items will be approved in one motion. Is there a request to remove any items from the Consent Agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Commissioner Beanhoff.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented by staff.
Is there a second? Commissioner Willoughby.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second to approve the Consent Agenda per staff recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Motion carried. Thank you. New business. Z-04-1905, pre-plat, 07-1905, SP-12-1905, Project Homeland, located in the 24,300 to 25,000 block of West 43rd Street. Applicant seeks a recommendation for approval for rezoning the AG portion of the site to planned industrial, and approval of a preliminary site plan and preliminary plat. Staff has a report on this? Thank you, Stephanie.
And we believe at this point, we're working toward a couple of things, but finding out how to improve 43rd Street. But overall, the traffic and the number of parking spaces that they've dedicated to the site so far is consistent with what our code will require. We can't really define required parking until we know the number of employees for each of these buildings. So I can't give you a firm number on what's required quite yet, but I'm sure the applicant is dedicated to meeting all of what people comes up at that time. One other thing I want to restate too, is that we don't have elevations or a landscape plan for this site plan particularly at this time. So again, those are open items. And along with the final site plan phase, we would expect to see those elevations and see that landscape as well. And we also have an image on the screen showing the different lots on the plat. Lot 1, as you see, in sort of that pinkish-red color is the western lot. Lot number 2 is in yellow, and that is the sort of middle-north lot, I would say. Lot 3 would be the lower-middle lot, and it's directly adjacent to 43rd Street there. The blue lot is Lot 4. And then if you can see the little purple square, that's Lot 5, kind of inside of Lot 4 there. And that's where that cell tower exists. So you can see on this diagram the different lot layouts that they're proposing. Lot 2 does not have direct access to 43rd Street, so there will be easements for cross-access that'll be provided on the plat to ensure that you can actually access Lot 2 and be able to get Lot 2 access to 43rd Street. I also want to mention that the staff report includes review of development engineering. So we have had a preliminary review for all things engineering on the site. That'll obviously be more finalized as we get through to final site plan stage with the applicant. So there's a lot of comments in there that are very helpful for the applicant at this stage, and tells them what they will need to work on to move forward in the process for a final approval. But at this point, this is again just for a preliminary approval of their site plan. You'll also see that the fire department has looked at it and provided some comments in our staff report as well. And from a fire standpoint, in a preliminary plan point, the fire department's comfortable with where the plan is at for preliminary approval at this time. With that being said, I can go over staff's recommendations if you would like, Chairman.
Please.
So staff recommends approval of Z-04-1905, rezoning from AG to PI, and rezoning at all to PI, for Project Homeland, located in the 24,300 to 24,500 blocks of West 43rd Street, subject to the thawing conditions. But the rezoning shall be contingent upon approval of preliminary site plan SP-12-1905, and preliminary plat, pre-plat, 07-1905. For preliminary site plan, staff recommends the approval of SP-12-1905, for Project Homeland, located in the 24,300 to 24,500 blocks of West 43rd Street, subject to thawing conditions. Site plan approval should be contingent upon approval of rezoning C-04-1905, which is rezoning from AG and PI to all PI, and the preliminary plat, pre-plat, 07-1905. And only the conceptual preliminary site plan shall be considered approved, and the applicant shall submit a final site plan at a later date, with consideration by the planning provision. And lastly, for the preliminary plat, staff recommends approval of pre-plat 07-1905, preliminary plat, Project Homeland, an industrial subdivision located in the 24,300 to 24,500 blocks of West 43rd Street, subject to the thawing conditions. Preliminary plat approval should be contingent upon approval of rezoning C-04-1905, rezoning from AG and PI to all PI, and preliminary site plan SP-12-1905. Two, acceptance of the dedications on a final plat by the Shawnee Governing Body, and recording of the final plat with the Johnson County Register of Deeds shall be completed prior to the issuance of any bulk improvements. Condition three, all lots shall be subject to the bulk and use requirements of the PI, planned industrial zoning district. Condition four, all street, storm, and street-like public improvements are required to be constructed in accordance with the future final site plan for this development. Condition five, the provisions of the excise tax shall be satisfied prior to obtaining the meritorious signature on the signature copy of the final plat. Condition six, open space fees at the current open space fee rate in effect at the time of the building permit is applied for shall be paid prior to the issuance of a building permit. And condition seven, the applicant is responsible for obtaining all such permits as may be required by all federal, state, and local agencies, included by, but not limited to, the City of Shawnee, Johnson County Environmental Department, Kansas Department of Health and Environment, Kansas Division of Water Resources, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And that concludes the staff report at this time.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is the applicant present? If you'd come forward and state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Pete Heaven. I'm with the law firm Spencer Fain. My address is 9401 Indian Creek Parkway in Overland Park. Very happy to be here tonight.
And I assume the applicant is in agreement with staff recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we endorse the staff recommendations. We agree to abide by them, and we think we're going to have a very exciting project here. If you have any questions. To give you some idea, this will be very similar to if you've been to Logistics Park in Edgerton. Large industrial, very attractive industrial buildings with enhanced landscape. And I will tell you, this is all conceptual tonight. What we were trying to do was get our zoning in place first. We have already had several people very interested in pad sites, but we needed to get our zoning in place first. These lots may change, the dimensions may change, they're going to float for a little while. In fact, we've had one interested party who said they'd like to build 650,000 square feet. So if we do that, we'll probably have to move a lot line here or there, and bring 700 or 800 employees just for that building. So this is conceptual in nature, we understand that. We've got a lot of requirements, a lot of road to cover before we can put the buildings up, but we're ready to do that. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I've also got representatives of the developer, Eric Buer and Rachel Duval, and Chip Corcoran, our engineer, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for applicant or staff? Commissioner Montgomery?
So it's conceptual. Does that mean you're not anticipating building, spec buildings here then? You're going to have tenants and then build their?
We prefer build to suit. It's safer, of course, but we also are interested in doing a spec building or two, smaller ones.
Any other questions for applicant or staff? I have a couple of questions. And one of them has to do with drainage there, because I remember there's a facility we okayed that's on, it's about third or fourth one out there, that is basically using the permeability of the sand as the way they're getting rid of these storm waters. Is that correct? That's, what is it, West End? Not West End, West, West Link, right. Has the staff seen anything that said that that is not working the way it was supposed to?
We have not discussed that particular site with our engineers, but I'd be happy to get back to you at our next meeting.
Thank you. And I think they addressed it somewhat, that Edwardsville has a similar issue or similar type of drainage. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And to me, I wonder, because of the fact that we're getting into flooding stages, I'm guessing they work just as well now, and that the land is high enough above the, what would be the flood level of the river, that we're not getting filtration coming back up?
Yes, I can assure you that our development engineers have reviewed this, although in concept, pretty thoroughly, as you can see in the staff report, and that there will be, this project will have to meet all of our standards for water quality, stormwater, anything you can name of engineering-wise. And I would also defer to the applicant's engineer to answer any specific questions related to what they have designed so far for the site.
Thank you. Also, our understanding is, is there's no sewer line out there, and if, Mr. Heaven, if you were to guess, how long would you think that might be? So we're looking into the future, but five, six years?
Oh, sewers. Well, we'll have sewers long before that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. In fact, we're in negotiations right now with Johnson County Wastewater and the city to have the entire property sewed. It should come before we can put our first building up.
Very good. Now, question for staff. If my memory is correct, we have Riverfront Park that sits down in that area, and somehow, my memory is that the access to Riverfront Park was going to be 43rd Street. Okay? If that's the case, the amount of traffic you're showing that would be industrial-type traffic is going to need to mesh with people going out to Riverfront Park. And I realize Riverfront Park could be 10 years from now, but if we're going to build a road there and have it built for that, then how much more traffic will Riverfront Park have? And it's going to be a mixture of basically over-the-road semis, and it's going to be families in cars. So I'm wondering if the 43, what's been proposed so far for 43rd Street is actually applicable to the amount of traffic we may see on that 10 years from now, because I don't think anybody wants to rebuild that damn road.
Well, we have to build an improved road first, definitely, so we want to do it right. We've actually been working quite a lot with the applicant and with staff, the different departments, both development engineering and traffic, transportation manager, to make sure that we come up with the right cross-section for this particular street. At this point, we are planning on having a rather large right-of-way dedication so that we can include a multi-use trail. So we have a rather large trail that would help lead to the park, but I know that doesn't necessarily address the?
Can I drive my car on that trail?
No, let me get to that. So that's something that we can definitely go back and check with our Parks and Recreation Department, as well as our Transportation Manager, and make sure that we're accounting for that in our traffic studies and in the road design as well.
Then I am correct that the traffic for the Riverfront Park is going to be on 43rd Street? It's how it's planned?
I'll have to double that.
And has that been taken into consideration with the preliminary ideas on how to rebuild 43rd Street?
I think preliminarily, yes, but we can see if we have a way to do a better projection on the traffic that may come from that park. I'm not certain that we analyze that traffic in conjunction with the applicant's traffic study. I'd be happy to go back and make sure that we address that before we approve any final plans.
And in addition to that, one other thing, and that is, if I'm reading the maps right, the south side of these warehouses will be in close proximity to the park. So if that's the case, I think we should consider landscaping on the south side of it, even though they haven't put a plan in, that I think that should be strongly considered to essentially, to essentially give the visibility, reduce the visibility of very nice, large warehouses if we're at this park setting that's going to be there for many, many years.
Agreed. And I believe in the staff report, you'll see that I recommended some foundation plannings and screening, but we can work on essentially puffing that up a little bit too, to match with what we're going to do with the park setting.
Thank you, on the south side?
Yes.
I didn't catch it on the south side, my mistake, Stephanie. Did he? Commissioner, Commissioner Willoughby?
I believe, Dennis, there is, after you come across the tracks on Clara Road, there is another road that goes west, which that is intended to be the northernmost point of the new park, which is like 48th or 47th or something. So, I mean, it'll, there will be a, it won't, all that traffic won't have to go down 43rd, is the way I understand it.
And that would be dependent upon Claire Road being upgraded, I believe.
I believe that Claire Road goes all the way to 43rd, okay?
Okay, yeah.
Oh, okay. So, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Willoughby.
And the park is going to be actually in the far southeast corner of this whole thing, the whole development.
Correct. Does commission have any other questions for applicant or staff? Commissioner Roth?
Question for applicant. Is there anything, what's driving the location of the cellphone tower?
It's already existing.
Oh, it's existing, I'm sorry, okay.
It's been there for 15 years or more. In fact, if we had our druthers, it wouldn't be there, but?
The fact I've never noticed it tells me it's probably not that noticeable, so, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would add one other thing. We've been in consultation with the Kansas Department of Transportation, and we'll also be doing some significant improvements to the K-7, 43rd Street interchange, which will also facilitate traffic.
Thank you. That's another question I had but hadn't got to. Thank you very much, Mr. Heaven. Any other questions for applicant or staff? If not, thank you. And we would, since this is a rezoning, we would be in a public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to come forward and speak on this matter? Seeing no one, then I would say the public hearing is over, we would be in commission discussion. I'm sorry. Commissioner Wise?
I was just going to say, I think, even though I realize this preliminary, I feel like it's a good use for this site, using a significant portion of it, and good location. Obviously, there are a lot of things that need to be worked out, but it looks like it could be really a positive development for Shawnee.
Before you make a motion, I'll add a couple of things, and that is, I think it's a wonderful location for it. It's really basically what the city and our long-term plan has put into existence. It works perfectly there, that's exactly what we're, the long-range plan said we should put there, so I have no problem with it. I have a problem with 43rd Street, knowing exactly how that's going to work or what it should do, but I'm not sure that's against the applicant. I'm also concerned about landscaping with the park being so close by. But as for the rezoning, I have no problem whatsoever with that, and I think it's a wonderful addition. And this is a long-term project. This one isn't going to be done overnight. So I have a problem with the 43rd Street deal, and I would suggest this. I would suggest maybe that we give staff a chance to answer that, so we appropriately know, and that way we can be guided. And I, I myself, wouldn't mind tabling it till the next meeting to find out if that is the case. Or is there another way to do it, to say, you know, I really question 43rd Street? If it's not in their traffic patterns so far, if it hasn't been fully implemented into what the traffic patterns would be, then I'm not sure the road we're discussing tonight is going to be appropriate. Stephanie, you have guidance on that?
Yeah. So first of all, Mark informed me this will actually be built to major collector standards as well, so you can rest assured that it will have a certain capacity to it. At this point, we've been working very well with the applicant and our team to make sure that we're doing the correct 43rd Street improvement. And even from staff's point of view, we haven't fully determined, I think, exactly how we want that to be. So at this point, it's preliminary even for our discussions, and we're satisfied with that at this point, because we do have to figure out exactly who the tenants are, what their actual traffic projections are going to be based on the tenants and employees. We also will definitely take into account the park and the needs for the park traffic. At this point, we know there's going to be an improvement, and we are working diligently together with the applicant. And I don't see a need personally to table it, just because it is preliminary at this point. We're not approving a final plan. We'll definitely have the final plan well-vetted between staff and the applicant, and also KDOT by the time we bring it back to you for a final approval.
So it will be corrected, and the rest of that stuff will be taken into consideration?
Absolutely. We're not making a final approval for anything except for preliminary plans and also the rezoning. So the rezoning is really the big item tonight. Everything else, we still have some work to do with both staff and the applicant to get everything to a final stage, and it will absolutely come back to you for approval. This is not going to be built, as you see on the plans tonight. We'd have to come back to you before anything gets that sort of blessing.
Thank you, Stephanie. And I always appreciate the fact that our staff is so nice to be so very kind to me when I'm wrong, and I really appreciate that very much. So then we're back in commission discussion. Commissioner Les Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we recommend approval of Z-04-1905, Project Homeland, subject to the conditions listed on the staff report.
Is there a second? Commissioner Roth? The motion is second to approve Z-04-1905 rezoning of 24,300 to 25,300 block of West 43rd Street from AG to planned industrial. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. Commissioner Wise?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a preliminary site plan, SP-121905, for Project Homeland, located in the 24, 324, 500 blocks of West 43rd Street, subject to staff's conditions.
Is there a second? Commissioner Beanhardt?
A second then.
There's a motion, a second for approval of SP-121905, Project Homeland, for the 24,300, 25,500 block of West 43rd Street. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So we have the pre-plat, pre-plat left. Commissioner Montgomery?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the preliminary plat, 07-19-05, for Project Homeland, in the 24,300 to 24,500 block of 43rd Street, subject to the staff recommendations.
Is there a second? Commissioner John Smith?
Second to the motion.
There's a motion, a second for approval of pre-plat, 07-1905, Project Homeland, in the 24,300 to 25,300 block of West 43rd Street, per staff recommendations. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. We look forward to seeing you many times in the future. Good.
You have to question their choice of legal counsel, however.
Oh, okay. Then moving on, we're to other business, which our discussion item is, I guess Matt Perle is going to entertain us with the discussion of the capital improvement plan.
I'm Matt Perle, Assistant Public Works Director here at the City of Shawnee. Tonight, we have a 10-year proposed capital improvement program for the Planning Commission. On a side note, last year and years prior, we did a six-year capital improvement program. We moved it to a 10-year program to better coincide with the budget and the fund projections that our finance department puts together. So overview of what we'll be talking about tonight, we're just going to hit on some highlights of projects. The complete summary of all the projects is in the packet on the very nice spreadsheet. We're going to hit on current projects for this year, projects for 2020 to 2025, and then proposed project, excuse me, proposed projects for 2026 to 2029. We've broken that out because after 2025, we have some sales taxes that sunset, so we have to show them as not renewed, so that limits kind of our capital outlay for those years. So then we'll talk about next steps and have discussion and questions. So dive right in. This map shows all the projects from the capital improvement program spreadsheet that have a dedicated location to them. This does not include any maintenance projects, such as the street maintenance or the pipe repair maintenance program, due to the locations of those not being established currently. First project we'll hit on is this year's 2019 Johnson Drive and Widmer Culvert Repair and Lining Project. This will be a big undertaking on Johnson Drive in the Lakeview Estates neighborhood, on the entrance off of Widmer and Johnson Drive. The pipe that is in the ground is in failure mode, so this is a needed repair. We won't be closing Johnson Drive fully, but there will be some pretty substantial traffic control on that project. It'll be a repair and lining of approximately 1,400 linear feet of stormpipe, and this is one of six projects that we have slated for this year that are part of an $8 million bond that we have together. Next project is Quavira Drive and Park Culvert Replacement. We are going to be doing a full closure of Quavira Drive at Park Street, just north of 55th, or, yes. And this is slated for work over the summer, so we don't impede any bus route traffic for that area. So again, this is part of all the $8 million bond projects are culverts in very high-profile locations that are needing of repair due to imminent failures. So again, Blackfish Parkway and Hauser, this one is also part of the $8 million bond project. Full road closure on Blackfish Parkway. The culverts underneath Blackfish are around that same age. All these pipes are around the same age, about 20 to 25 years old, metal pipe that has rusted out. So we have received bids on this. It was approved, this is my spreadsheet or my PowerPoint from the previous council committee meeting. It was approved by city council at the previous council meeting. I believe Blue Nile Contractors was the awarded bidder. And that's it for 2019. Moving on to 2020, we have the 75th Street corridor from Switzer to Quavira. As you guys are aware, the Planning Commission is aware, there is the Westbrook Green Development at 75th and Quavira. There'll be some intersection improvements at 75th and Quavira intersection, Midland overlay, curb and sidewalk replacements, installation of a multi-use trail along 75th Street. All the storm drainage will be looked at, and any that is in need of repair will be replaced or repaired. We do have an outside grant for this with Planning Sustainable Places, and they are looking currently at getting public input for streetscape items. 2020 also has Flum Road, Midland Drive to the southern city limits. This project was new to the CIP this year. It was on previous year's CIP but taken off. It was added back on due to the, there's a lot of stormwater needs on, along Flum. There are some failing pipes along that section. So this was added on to the 2020 Cars project, so we can get some outside funding match for all that replacement stormwater needs. This will be a Midland overlay, curb and sidewalk replacement, storm drainage improvements, as I said, and lighting upgrades from high-pressure sodiums to LEDs. So 2020 is 60th Street, Flint to Neiman. This is our second SIP Street, the first of which was Flint Street done last year. We're also matching some CDBG funding for this one, so that's another outside funding source we're taking advantage of. This will be a reconstruction and widening of the complete street from Flint to Neiman, sidewalk and trail improvements, storm drainage improvements, and lighting upgrades, similar to what was done on Flint Street last year. 2020, we have 55th Street in Belmont Park. This is currently vacant, 40 acres of land. We, our Parks Department is currently doing a master plan, and we are intending to start design on this in late 2019 for construction in 2020. So all the amenities and whatnot will be determined with, determined with the design later this year. 2020, Dr. Sullivan's House. This is actually a house at 135th and Mission that they intend to move from that site to Shawnee Town 1929. The house is being donated to the City of Shawnee, so we are only going to be responsible for the relocation costs and the new foundation that is established at Shawnee Town 1929. 2021 is Phase 1 of our Monticello Road from Shawnee Parkway to 71st Street. This will be a reconstruction and widening, relocation of a Southern Star Pipeline in the area, sidewalk and trail improvements, storm drainage improvements, lighting upgrades. And then just a side note there, that 2022 is when Phase 2 is happening. 2021, we also have 67th and Cottonwood Storm Drainage Improvements. This is a flood remediation project to alleviate flooding of six homes and two streets. This project is eligible for Johnson County SMAC funding. It will involve culvert work under 67th Street and under Cottonwood Street, as well as channel improvements in the backyards. 2021, Goddard Street. So this will be our third SIP project on the current sales tax funding. We have reconstruction widening, sidewalk, trail improvements, storm drainage improvements, and lighting upgrades. 2021, we also have a park restroom facility improvements project. The three parks that are listed there, Gum Springs Park, Swarner Park, and Herman Laird Park, all have restrooms that were built in the 1980s that do not currently meet ADA standards. So this will be a complete tear-down and rebuild of those restroom facilities. As was mentioned earlier, 2022, we have Phase 2 of Monticello Road. This is a completely new roadway alignment, south of 71st Street, down to the 7900 block. It will be built to our minor arterial standard, and it will include sidewalk and trail facilities, storm drainage facilities, and street lighting. 2023 is our fourth street improvement project, Monrovia Street, 55th to Johnson Drive. One thing I forgot to mention about all of our SIP projects, we are reevaluating all the criteria on those before we move on to the next SIP project on our prioritized, prioritized list. So just to make sure it meets the criteria that was established on that, on that SIP program. This, again, will be a reconstruction and widening, sidewalk and trail improvements, storm drainage improvements, and lighting improvements. 2023, Midland Drive, Lackman to Elm Ridge is the Cars project for 2023. This will be a removal and price replacement of damaged curb and sidewalk, upgrade and repair of existing storm drainage systems, Midland overlay of the surface asphalt, and as with all projects, we are doing lighting upgrades. 2024, Johnson Drive and I-435 signalization. This was originally the 2020 Cars project. It was moved out to 2024 to make room for Flum Road, due to some more pressing needs along that route. This will be a traffic signal on both I-435 ramps on Johnson Drive, and it will have the ability to be interconnected with the Johnson Renner signal to ease green light times along that corridor. Our Transportation Manager, Kevin Manning, is working with our consultant, WSP, to try to get some outside grant opportunities for this project, to see if we can do more than just signalization. So. 2025, Midland Drive, Shawnee Mission Parkway to I-435. This is currently a two-lane jits section road. It will be a reconstruction and widening to current standards, curb and gutter, sidewalk and trail facilities, storm drainage facilities, and lighting improvements. 2025, our fifth and final street improvement project is McInney Drive, Neiman to Bond. This will be a reconstruction widening, sidewalk and trail improvements, storm drainage improvements, and lighting improvements. And also in 2025, our Parks Department, as I mentioned earlier, is doing some master planning, and they have a project slated for 2025 to install approximately one mile of 10-foot trail throughout the city. Those locations will be established with the master plan. So past 2025, actually, in early 2025, is when our Parks and Pipe Sales Tax and our Pavement Sales Tax sunset. So at beyond that point, we are showing some, some street projects that were submitted to Mark for the 2050 Plan, Transportation Plan, but then, other than those street projects, we are just showing maintenance only. So our, our annual stormwater pipe repair project and our annual Midland overlay project, street maintenance project. So next steps, we went to Planning Commission tonight. We hope to go to the city council for approval of this proposed capital improvement plan on May 28th. And with that, I will open it for discussion.
Yes, I know for a number of years, there's been a signalization at 71st Street and Flum. Did not see that on the list. Is that still on the CIP?
Any improvements at 71st and Flum will be taken into account when we do the Flum Road project in 2020. I know currently, they have done some traffic studies along that route, and they are still establishing what type of intersection they want to do there.
Thank you.
Question, I believe it's 63rd Street, just past Swarner Park, where it connects back to, I believe it's Lackman. You know, it's not really an improved road, and there's an entrance to, there's a, I don't believe it's a nursing home, but high-rise there with no lighting, and it's just, the road is not in really good shape, and I don't know if that's been evaluated at any point. I don't, there may not be enough traffic to warrant changes to it, but it, you know, there's no shoulder, steep drop-off, and with no lighting in a hill on top of it, if you know where that is. So it's between, I believe it's Swarner and then Lackman. Or is it? Lackman to Mauer, that's what it is. Thank you. Knew I was off a street or two.
I am not currently aware of any projects we have slated for that, but I can, I can ask our street maintenance group about any improvements in the future beyond our capital plan.
I have a question.
Mr. Willoughby?
So looking at the Flum Road and Park Street, where they're going to go, the creek goes under there. Several years ago, we did one north of Johnson Drive on Flum at the bottom of the hill, and they used the, the plastic, two big plastic, like five-foot tubes that they pushed through.
Yeah, they did utilize a lining system on that section of pipes. I believe these pipes are too far gone for that. So this is requiring a full, full replacement of those pipes.
Hmm, okay. Commissioner John Smith?
Five years or so ago, I was a consultant, worked with some of us on a task force after the sales taxes passed. the sales taxes passed to develop a plan. Is that still being considered or is that past?
Yeah, the SIP streets that I have shown tonight are what I think you're referring to, where they got public input and with some others about prioritizing streets that needed to be upgraded to current standards. So those SIP projects that are shown on the capital improvement plan are what was prioritized back then, when that group was put together.
Commissioner Les Smith?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Hey, man, good presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks. This is kind of for my own clarification, if you will. Has the, where's the road closure going to be at Blackfish and Hauser? As it relates to Hauser in particular?
I believe it's east of Hauser, where the culverts cross under Blackfish.
They do.
So it will be closed just east of Hauser, and I'm not sure on the eastern side of the closure. Is that, that might be in the project sheet for that project. And if you're interested in more information on that, I could get you in contact with Ernie Longoria. He's our storm drainage engineer working on that project.
Yeah, we've had quite a deal with the neighbors in that subdivision recently due to some development beginning on a former golf course. And so Hauser runs from 71st to Blackfish, and of course, if that were to be the major detour, it would kind of be a problem with the neighborhood, I'm sure. I mean, I would imagine going to try and route it up 71st or up Flum to 71st would be my guess.
Yeah, current traffic control standards state for, you have to match what type of road you're closing. So Blackfish is, I want to say, a minor arterial, so we would have to match that type of street to whatever detour route they put.
So if it becomes a problem, just have them call you, Ernie, or Kevin?
Ernie is-
What do you want to pass that buck to?
Ernie is our project engineer working on that project. I would defer any questions on that project to him.
Okay. Thanks.
No problem.
Any other questions for Mr. Perrell? I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
And it's nice to see, and it's a shame Commissioner Brayley isn't here, because Commissioner Brayley would be very excited and he would be very complimentary that we're putting in a sidewalk on 71st Street, which happens to be just across from Hereford Park, which that's been an issue after we built the park, that really, the only way to get to the park was to drive your car to the park, which was kind of one of those, wish we had maybe more money or more foresight or something like that. So consequently, what it brings up is in the 2020, 55th and Belmont, we're going to build a park out there for, which has been in the plans for a long time. Interestingly enough, that's, I think, that 55th would be Johnson Drive there, okay, which is a fairly wide two-lane street with the sidewalks on the south side and the park is on the north side. And I think I would be hard-pressed when this comes in front of us to say this is good if we don't consider other ways to get to this park, these parks, besides driving to them. Consequently, that's what made me a little excited about 43rd Street. If we're going to build these parks, and they're very good parks, they're very nice, but if we are not alternately finding a different way other than driving to the parks, then I think, I think we as a city are not doing enough good planning ahead.
That's a good comment, and I will be sure to bring it up to our project engineer that's going to work on that park project, Bert Schnetgogi.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Wise?
One question about facilities, and I realize this may not be, you know, we've got the restroom projects in here currently. Are there any plans for, like, fire station upgrades for some of the older fire stations, for example, the one on Shawnee Mission Parkway and Quavira Road?
I believe our fire department is currently undergoing some master planning, so I would probably see those included in maybe next year's CIP.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Perrell? If not, I believe what the staff would like us to do is propose that we OK the capital improvement plan as it is written, or if there's any exceptions to it, and pass it on to city council as such. Commissioner Wise?
I'll make a motion, we allow the capital improvement plan as presented to, be presented to city council for approval, per staff's recommendations.
Is there a second? Commissioner Les Smith?
Second.
So motion is second to, for approval of the capital improvement program by the Planning Commission and pass it on to the city council as it is written. Is that correct? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Perrell. Then that would put us down to, does the staff have anything for the commissioners? Start down at that end. Commissioner Montgomery?
I do. Please. No, thank you.
I do.
No, thank you. If there's something in particular I want printed, I will just call and request that be done. Otherwise, no.
Does the staff have anything else for the commissioners? Very fine. Then that would leave us with, does the commission have anything for staff? If not, Commissioner Les Smith?
Done, yes. Mr. Chairman, I live the weird dream.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Montgomery, thank you for the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. We're done. Thank you.
Sometimes my humor, they knew what I was talking about. It wasn't you. Oh, no, I got the thing.
In my second presentation, I wrote the news.
I appreciate you.
All the information's in the packet.